Open the August fourteenth meeting of the planning commission?
No, it's good.
So, the first item on the agenda is agenda changes. Does anyone have any agenda changes?
I wish sometimes I had an agenda change.
Just to have something to talk about. So, number two, public comments for non-agenda items, there being no public. I think that that would be a negative. So, great. So, this is the part where we just dive into architectural and streetcape standards. So, each one of us has chosen a, well, some have been given. Are you here in general?
Oh, in the wrong spot. We're upstairs.
Yeah, I mean, we'd love to chat about stuff, but yeah, you're upstairs. Darn, it's been so long. So, hi there. Are you here for planning commission?
I'm actually here for my husband.
Upstairs.
Yeah, upstairs.
Third floor.
Yeah, third floor?
I'd really like it if you stayed.
I know. I know.
Let them go if they come in.
You know, if we, I'm just saying, if we had cookies or cheesecake, they would probably stay. So, I'm just...
I will bake next meeting. I'll make that promise.
I'll bring fruit. Okay, enough about food. So, this is the fun part where we get to go through design standards from various towns. And do we just want to start up at the beginning with Brattleboro? And just pointing out, Barb, anything that you found interesting that you think we should take a look at?
There were a couple items that I need definitions of that I had no idea what they were, like grass pavers. Anybody know what grass pavers are?
Excuse me, what is that word?
Grass pavers.
I think I know.
Is that like those?
What were they saying about grass pavers?
When you cut your lawn, you have a little mold, and you put all the grass into that mold, and you bake it. In your oven, and then you have a grass paper.
And what, can you, do you have the context? That might help. Not that I can answer it, because I'm sure it is. So, you see it in small driveways where grass grows?
It's like a concrete thing with grass growing between it, maybe?
Yeah, so you mow it, but it's in a basically... Okay, and then the next one?
Open grids.
Okay, fenestration pattern.
Window pattern.
Fenestration is window.
Oh, okay, French.
Finest. Is that a French word, or Spanish, or Latin?
French. And how about roof pitch of six colon twelve?
That's the pitch.
That's specific.
I don't...
Six inches up.
For every twelve inches across, six inches up. And the angle there, what do they call that part of the angle?
Hypotenuse.
The hypotenuse is at a six and twelve pitch.
You mean, you didn't do all the calculations, Barb?
No.
Fifty percent.
Basically, the bigger the upper number, the steeper the roof.
Like a twelve twelve is a forty-five degree pitch.
So, what did you find interesting about Brattleboro standards?
They had, they have six different districts, varying from urban center, village center, service center, neighborhood center, mixed-use neighborhood, and an industrial district. And Alex didn't, actually didn't give me the information about the industrial district, so I guess we can't worry about that. Their setbacks varied from district to district. Some of them, you were expected to build right on the sidewalk. Others, it was a ten-foot setback to a maximum of forty. Okay. As far as permeability, they only addressed that in commercial buildings, where there had to be clear glass windows that offered a view into the facility. Parking, again, it varied by district. In the urban center and the village center, they just, they really asked for no parking on the street in front of the buildings unless it had to be handicap accessible, and then they would allow two or three spots. Any rear and side yard parking, they expected it to be screened by a wall, fence, or landscaping. And if it wasn't screened by a building that was in front of it...
Yeah, I noticed on what's up on the screen that the parking in the back and...
Right. And if it was right on the sidewalk, they could do a ten-foot setback, but then that setback area needed to be used for a restaurant, a park, some public facility.
Restaurant, you mean, like tables?
Tables outside, yeah.
Did they at times require you to build all the way to the front line?
Yes.
You couldn't back away from the front line?
In one of the districts, it was that way. I think it was probably the urban center.
The most commercial area.
So, Barb, when they organized this, just as a general question, did they organize it so that they went through each one of those six districts and described all those different conditions within each district?
Each district, yes.
Rather than, say...
It wasn't a generalized.
Okay.
There were some things that were the same district to district.
Yep.
But setbacks varied, the amount of impervious surface varied from place to place. One thing I found interesting was that they expected bicycle racks in front of the buildings every two hundred feet. That's pretty progressive. And that was across the districts, maybe not the industrial district, but the street grid, because I was reading only information for places that had already been developed, I don't have any information about that. The architectural variety, it had to pertain to whatever that district was. For example, the urban center and the village center tended to be their older section, so it had to fit in with what was already there. And they had huge lists of what was acceptable for businesses. Yeah, Maggie's got that up there now, and what the DRB could allow if they wanted to. And generally, it was not, how do I say, corporate businesses?
So, are those uses within one of those six districts?
Yes, yeah. And they listed it for each district, deleting some of them from one and allowing it in another. But you couldn't have a corporate or a chain kind of business in certain districts.
Did they have, they have specific language around that?
They did, and I'm trying to put my glasses on.
I found similar language in Jericho's, which I found very interesting.
Yeah, they said, "No franchise or corporate architecture is permitted in the village district," for example.
Does that mean that the business couldn't be there, or like the McDonald's in Stowe can't look like a McDonald's?
It can't have the golden arches, it can't have...
I got the feeling that it couldn't be there at all, that no franchise or corporate, oh, architecture permitted.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it probably would have to fit in with...
Probably you can't...
So, it's kind of, that's kind of different than form-based zoning, where you're trying to figure out what things look like and don't look like, not what they are.
Right, not the activity.
Right, so I'm almost, I'm almost inclined to believe that it's structured. Can you read the section again?
Well, it's just the notes that I took. No franchise or corporate architecture permitted in the village district.
So, a franchise architecture would be, I think Pizza Hut.
Yeah.
You know, right? Or, you know, corporate architecture, Kenny Drugs, or, you know, standard...
Everywhere America thing.
Right. You know, what a Friendly's restaurant looks like, or, you know, what a Chili's, or, you know?
Yeah.
That kind of thing. I don't think they're saying you can't have a Kenny's, or a Pizza Hut, or McDonald's, or whatever. I think they're saying it can't look like a Kenny's, or a Pizza Hut, or McDonald's.
Like a corporate cookie.
Yeah.
Okay, which made sense for their historic areas. Streetscapes, they called for certain kinds of windows, porches, entryway coverings. They limited the size of a blank wall. There had to be windows or some kind of landscaping that would break it up.
Twenty, it's like walls, let's not exceed twenty feet.
Yeah.
I assume that's width.
And even in certain areas, they defined the kind of landscaping. Things had, shrubs had to be four feet apart, certain kinds of trees, which was interesting. They really got into detail there.
This is an active set of regulations, not a draft set. Their zoning regulations include these rules now.
Yes.
Could you see any places that had been developed since these rules were in place, or that they had a fact?
I didn't go to Brattleboro, so I don't know.
Oh, okay.
I just, remembering Brattleboro on the outskirts, it's all the commercial McDonald's and gas stations and things. And then as you got closer to the center, I could see where there would be the no parking. The parking would have to be, what I'm remembering, behind the buildings. And parking cannot be visible from the front of the building. It had to be screened so that you couldn't see it. But then I'm thinking, we might have similar, because, and I think over at Kenny, the parking lot that's behind the row of apartments, now you can't see the stuff that's back there, but then you get into the Kenny parking lot, and there it all is. And Brattleboro expected electrical boxes, mechanical things and such, to be totally screened from view.
That's interesting, because since you and I had that conversation, it's like I never noticed them, but then I drove along Commerce Street, and there's one in front of every single freaking building. It's ridiculous, ridiculous. It looks terrible.
Well, I mean, that's going to be pretty common in residential neighborhoods, too. You gotta have a place for, you know, if you want underground power, you gotta have a place for that power to come up, so they can tie into it for a house. And you gotta have a transformer, because they're not running one hundred and twenty volts all the way down your road.
And you gotta have screening.
Huh?
Yeah.
You gotta have screening.
We need to talk about screening, because those have none.
But at the same time, if you walk up to one of those boxes, right, the labels all over that box are going to say, you know, "Keep vegetation three feet away from here," at least.
Danger.
Because somebody has to get into that box every so often.
Service.
And, you know, they need the space to do it safely. So, you can't, you can't do one hundred percent screening around these boxes. You can do it thoughtfully, but, you know, you gotta think of what, you know, what that box is there for, and what the requirements, right, over time are, to get in there.
I think our example, I think of is the medical building up on Falls Road there, and they have a large transformer box right in front, and it's screened by Cedar, I think, on three sides. You can't see, you can't see the box. And on the unscreened side, which fortunately they arranged so it's away from the main road, that's where you get access.
That's where you get access.
Right, so you can make that happen, but you've got to...
Yeah.
Does the rule actually say that service access needs to be from the side away from the public right-of-way, the prime road?
Well, I mean, access, you know, yeah, access needs to be not visible from the street. At the same time, I think if I'm the power company, right, I want whatever screening you put in place to be a reasonable height, because chances are, when I go in there to work on that thing, let's say it blows up, I'm gonna have to crane, have a crane truck to get that thing out of there.
Yeah, to take it away. So, you need that kind of servicing access beyond just a technician standing there changing some switches or connections.
And I know all this, because I've watched the power company lay it, and they change out my transformer there.
Right, how much work.
But still, isn't there a way to screen it, maybe five feet away, or?
Not around all four sides.
Okay, I can accept that. I noticed that over at DPT, at the intersection there, right on the corner, are the utility boxes in plain view. They're not screened at all, so, anyway, that's one of my little pet peeves. Okay, on-street parking, they limit the number of spaces in front of buildings in certain districts. Some, there's no on-street parking at all. Again, bike racks must be provided. And the use of grass pavers for parking in the neighborhood district. So, again, by district, they determine what things need to look like. They allow drive-throughs at the rear of buildings in certain districts, and others, they're not permitted at all. And there's no height restriction on flagpoles, signs, and other freestanding structures that are not located within public rights of way, which to me doesn't make sense, but maybe it hasn't been a problem for them. And I know there's one other rule. The amount of square footage they allow for paving for vehicle access changes depending on the district. It can vary from eight hundred square feet to as low as two hundred. So, they're protecting the neighborhoods. And buildings, no higher than four stories or sixty feet. And if it's, if they're looking at something taller than that, then the fire department needs to be contacted, and they determine if they can handle it or not. And I think that kind of hits everything that I found of interest.
Does the building heights change by district also?
You know, I'd have to really go back and look at that.
The districts that you listed out include all the way from straight residential to basically commercial and office and mixtures.
Oh, okay. In the urban center, here it says the height, two stories minimum to six stories max. So... Yeah, they're doing it by...
By district.
Yeah, if you look up on the screen. Huh.
Two stories to four stories, yes, so it varies by district.
So, was there any one thing that you think that Heinsberg got to adopt from that?
The off-street parking would be one. Bike racks, I was impressed with that. And screening of the things we don't want to look at, the parking lots, the mechanical things, and that kind of thing.
Well, thank you.
You're welcome. It was, it was interesting.
Yeah, it is... Oh, I think I made a mistake. I said, I read something about height limits. I said, "Do not apply to flagpoles, et cetera." Not located, but they do. So, they limit the height of things that are not within public rights of way. All right, are we ready to move away from Brattleboro?
Of course, it is a bigger city than we are.
Marie, Marie's up.
So, first of all, I was just saying to Ralph, I really liked the way things were laid out. In the manual that Alex sent me, sent us, this is about Severance Corners. I don't know, maybe I, there was more, and I missed it, but all of what I've read here is about Severance Corners, which I think is kind of interesting, because we have Haystack up here.
Right.
And Severance is north of Colchester.
And I think, I think he, my guess is he did that, well, for one, so much of Colchester, it's just all over the place.
Right, exactly.
But, yeah, I think that's exactly why. And we were thinking about doing a road trip there, like face crossing.
So, I, yes, so I, that's a good idea.
Cool.
So, to start out with, under purpose, I really liked some of the wording, that they said that this is just facilitated, facilitated development pattern and interconnected street network with the Severance Corners form-based district that, and this is what I really like, that is modeled on traditional New England downtowns. I like that. And it says, which I think is applicable to us, "The district shall be characterized by higher density, mixed-use, multi-story buildings that can accommodate retail, office, commercial, light industrial, civic, and residential uses. It shall have buildings set close to the sidewalk with entrances, storefronts, and windows facing the street. Streets with curbs, street trees, and sidewalks shall define small to medium-sized blocks." And I noticed in the other handout we got about setbacks from what we all talked about we wanted, it says, "Zero setback allowances, build-to-line requirements." And that's not what they have here, and that's changed my mind with that. I don't agree with what, because some of their, there's some really good little illustrations, which I also love, in here, and in fact, on page seven. It shows some buildings, and it does talk about the setbacks, of the front setbacks, that they could be from zero foot minimum to eighteen foot max. See how the buildings kind of, yeah, some are closer than others, even though I think it's the same building, so maybe I'm a little confused. No, actually, the second building, the one in the middle, is setback further than the first one, and then the elevator, or whatever you call that, is setback even more. I like that look, not every one right up to the line. So, I thought that was interesting. Let's see, what else? They have this nice little table, kind of on page five, which breaks it all down. They have three different types of streets, A, B, and C, and they tell which are allowed, which uses are allowed in different ones. A and B are only allowing two stories. C Street allows three stories, which, three max. And I know we had talked about stories, building height relief. Let's see what else caught my eye here.
Yeah, I like charts like that.
I love it.
Charts and tables, where instead of in our regs, somebody's got to go all over the place.
They're very confusing.
And here, it's like just straightforward.
And Ralph, I said, "Yeah, you're, you're in the business." You know, I'm not a developer or an architect by any means, and it's really hard to understand, but if, for someone who's a professional, and it's hard to understand, that's a little discouraging. So, I really commend them in this display. I can somewhat understand it. And then they do have architectural standards, which seem pretty, pretty interesting. And there's that word fenestration on both front and side surfaces, and overhang, which I think Ralph has talked about that. Then it goes on to walls, walls, and roofs, windows and doors. And then in parking, I thought this was interesting. At one point, they said, "Nowhere shall more than a hundred and fifty spaces be allowed." And it says...
Is that...
That is on page twelve.
All right. Did you say break up the parking lot?
So, that was what I was just leading into. It says, "No service parking lot shall include more than a hundred and fifty spaces. This calculation shall include all contiguous parking areas not separated by buildings, streets, or green spaces at least fifty foot in width." So, I don't know, a hundred, how many proposed parking spaces were they thinking, are they thinking of in Hannaford's, John? Do you know?
I can't remember.
So, a hundred and fifty is really a lot, isn't it?
That is a lot, yeah.
Okay.
Brattleboro, they would allow that? They would allow them to do ten parking spaces, then it has to be broken up with an island or planting or something.
Right. So, I'm just, you know, I couldn't relate to that, but I thought it was interesting that they at least did have a number. So, you know, mostly what I really focused on, because this is overwhelming to me, was the presentation of this, the ease of reading it. I think that it's worth a visit. I really do think that there's probably a lot of things in here that would be applicable to the development north of us.
Severance Corner, is that the new area that's developed?
North, north of Colchester Village, right? Am I describing...
You go past Costco, you keep going to the...
Yeah, yeah, it's, yeah, correct.
Or you can even take its own exit off the interstate, I believe, and your Severance
Corners is right there, pretty close.
No, it's, if you take the Costco exit, and it's...
But isn't there another exit north of it, where you can double back a little bit, and Severance Corners is there?
Yeah, the next one is north.
I could be confused. I could be confused. I don't know that area very well.
I thought Severance Corners was the road into Mallet's Bay, you know, the intersection of Seven and the road to Mallet's Bay.
You could be right. I may be confusing another area that's even further out.
Creek Farm, the Creek Farm area, I know they're working on a lot, but...
Well, obviously, it's a pretty, I would guess it's a pretty undeveloped area yet.
Well, it's, so here, it's where Route Two meets one-twenty-seven. Yeah.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, they inflated that area really quickly.
So, the reason it's, so there's the interstate there, there's Costco. So, it's, it's north here. So, it's this big field, basically, that they developed, and, you know, with great hopes that it would be this town, like it described.
Yeah, right.
Old-fashioned town kind of thing.
But that...
And I think it's been, I've driven by it, but I've never stopped and looked around, so I've, I've heard other people say it hasn't been really as successful as they hoped.
I think you're right. Thank you about that. I think that it's still yet to be, I don't know, how much more development they can have, but it's got a ways to go, I think.
Yeah.
I can say that McGill Cuties gets a lot of business.
Yeah.
But I think of that more as a residential community, you know, looking at it from the outside than...
But I think maybe that they had more hope than that, don't you, Joe? When, when these rules were written, sounds like...
I don't know. I mean, I didn't, I didn't read your document. I only saw it when it was going up. I used to drive through it a lot when I had a boat, so, I mean, it always seemed like they were building a big residential community. Because, I mean, you can see all the buildings, you know, to the south.
But, but they're saying here in the, under purpose, it says, "The district shall be characterized by mixed-use, multi-story buildings, retail, office, commercial." I mean, I think they'd hoped for...
Well, but I gotta tell you, looking at it from this side, I'm just seeing a big, massive parking lot.
Yeah, I mean, there's some stuff...
And that's not attractive.
You know, there's some stuff facing one-twenty-seven is kind of where I thought all the businesses were.
Yep.
Perhaps there's some others. I really never went deep in there.
Right.
You know, stopped up front.
So, maybe we can look at this as something we don't want.
Yeah, right, yeah.
So, that was why, you know, I started talking here about the parking lots, parking spaces.
And as far as the language about, you know, a classic New England, this doesn't remind me at all of classic New England driving.
No, but I like the wording.
The wording, yeah.
Because it really tells you what they were thinking and wanted, but they're not getting it.
But, so that, that's what would be interesting to look at. They said, they put very specifically what they wanted.
Yeah.
And to me, it looks like they didn't get anything here.
Didn't get it, right. So, maybe...
Because they didn't define it. They didn't define what they met by-
Yeah, I thought of that when I read it. I said, well, your definition of a New England village might be different than mine.
Right.
So what does that mean?
I mean, is that, is that just some architecture elements on a building that, that hearkens back to classic New England arche- architecture, or is like, buildings look like they could have been here, you know, a hundred, a hundred years ago?
Right. Now that I look at it, I did get lost out there about a year ago, looking for somewhere. I was so confused. I went around like, three times before I found where I was going.
That section that, uh, is green space, the kind of a-
Where are you speaking to?
Cock eye, yeah, that, that whole L shape-
Okay.
On, on its side, which would screen, if there were development there, would screen that big parking area from Route Two and, and, and so forth. What, what was intended there? It looks like there might be some, some water areas there.
In the middle of it, right?
In the middle, so maybe it's, uh-
Oh!
Those are trees.
Yeah, trees and shrubs.
Trees and shadows.
Yeah.
Do you know whether that area is-
I don't.
-zoned for possible development?
I don't know, because it just talks about three different types of streets here. And it, that's one thing, it doesn't seem to totally define the area either, like, that's one thing in our rules, and you go to cer- it, it defines what area it is, which I think is great. That's real positive about the rules that we have existing now. Well, it does down here, it says US Route Seven and Two, Blakely Road and Seventh Road, about classification of streets. No, it doesn't, that's not it. I don't know.
Yeah, I, I think, you know-
I don't love-
If they'd had setbacks from, from the roads, like-
Yeah.
No setbacks on the road and had, had on-street parking for some of this stuff. But, but this is just, it's just like any other-
Yeah.
With those, those massive parking lots.
There's a note that Vermont Dance Academy-
Yep.
The building that's north of-
Jutting out.
North of the parking, that's right close to that road.
Pretty close, yep.
And so that must be the entrance side, uh, of the building.
I suspect it comes off the street, the other, the inside street.
Yeah, I think it comes off the, the entrance is off the inside street, the parking area.
Yes.
Where the big parking lot is, that's the entrance side, and they're right up against the sidewalk there.
But I tell you what, if I'm driving by, I have absolutely zero interest in pulling in there.
Right, I, now that you say that-
I don't ca- I don't care what little stores might be in there. I mean, zero, zero interest.
Right.
And what a shame, you know? They're, if they're trying to make this self-sufficient, you know, standing-
Certainly no sidewalks or anybody seems to be walking around either. Just parking lots.
Parking lots.
So that view that you're showing, Maggie, is from two?
That's from, uh, Seven.
That's from Seven, looking across that green space.
Yeah, so this is, Blakely Road is right there.
Not to mention that the roads are pretty wide out there, too.
So, things are a little closer here, but-
But still no s- do you, does anybody see sidewalks? I don't.
Oh, sidewalks.
There's some smaller-
Oh, there's one.
Little, yeah, maybe. Not much of anything.
You know, nothing-
And it just ends in a dead end here. It's like, the sidewalk.
Right, where would people come from?
You could walk up and look at the map.
Read the map.
Yeah, but where do you park?
And look, a gazebo that nobody has ever sat in.
Yeah, isn't that a shame? Because those are probably living units, right, on each side?
Yeah.
Yeah, upper floors, certainly.
Yeah.
It was a nice idea, just in the morning.
Yeah. So, you know, that's certainly something for us to pay attention to.
Yeah, it sure is.
Yeah.
Although, you know, i- they do have variation here and-
Yep, that's, that's what I was talking about in the sketches.
Right, from the variation and building height and-
I like that.
Yeah.
And I like-
Materials.
Yep, right. Absolutely, different colors.
Interesting who, who the developer was, who built it.
I don't know, I have no idea.
I, I think it shows how difficult it is to put words down that can result in a particular, uh, layout and appearance, short of actually doing the planning for a developer, saying, this is how you'll-
Right.
-arrange, uh, the activities on the land.
Well, if we don't get moving on these, then that's probably exactly what we're gonna see. Alright. So, uh, let's go, where am I? So I'm up next, and I'm doing Jericho, and I tell you what, people, I was just at a confer- conference, um, down in Randolph, and, uh, I met a couple of people from, folks from Randolph, including the, the planner, and, um, told them that, uh, there was a good chance that we'd be totally plagiarizing their, their regs, so, um-
Jericho's or Randolph?
Jericho.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, uh, yeah. So, uh, and my notes-
We're done here.
What? Yeah, we're done, we're just gonna plagiarize it all. We'll just, I'll just go through with a little pen, my little crayon, scratch out. No, so, so it's true that a lot of what I liked here is, is the fact that it was so accessible. It was, it, it is just so, it, it was incredibly clear. They, um, so they divided, um, into, uh, di- character districts, um, and zones, which I found very interesting. So they have, um, rural neighborhood district and, um, illustration.
But what does character district mean?
Did they define that?
Yeah.
Character district? No, I don't think they actually did.
I wonder what that actually means.
Yeah, that doesn't give much-
No.
Information about-
That, that, that's the, that's the old New England thing from-
Really? Could be.
So thirteen-three, one point three, the character. So we'll see the, they've got a table, um, of them. So, uh, and then rural neighborhood, um, and, um, and these, I believe, are photographs from, from, uh, Jericho, um, that show exactly what they're talking about. And, uh, and I just, I learned so much about, um, uh, frontage, um, uh, you know, saying specifically, for example, in this district, um, the setbacks, lot coverage, building height, yard, sorry, you know, yards, um, and their, uh, the building and lot uses in a, on a different table, but it's all right there, one page.
And does the form-based rules, is that just in certain districts, or is it over the entire town?
So Alex, for all of us, Alex just copied the, the Village Center, you know, um, that area for yours, and, and, um, the Village Center, the Town Center for yours. So he didn't give us the entire regulations for every town, so we're just looking at the Village Centers.
But what I'm saying is, are there form-based rules that apply outside?
I don't know, because I didn't, I didn't go to the Jericho zoning regulations to look at other-
Okay.
-areas of town.
Because in, in, for example, in, uh, South Hero, they specifically say, these form-based regulations apply to these districts, period. It happened to be the most built-up commercial areas of, of town.
Yeah.
But, you know, out in the residential area, no form-based code.
So there were three sort of character districts that this was-
Uh, rural neighborhood, Neighborhood Center, yeah, those two, and I think we have-
Well, I think you went by them, but you went fast enough that I couldn't absorb it all, but, so this is CD Three, more of a rural neighborhood.
Rural Neighborhood, CD Four is Neighborhood Center, um, I think.
CD Five?
No, I think that's it. Well, there may be. Again, Alex just copied for us the-
So it was just Three and Four?
Three and Four, is what I got.
I think it Jer-
It's interesting to know the picture, I'm sorry.
No, no.
Yeah, it is, it is.
Um, because, um, like the first one, go back a little bit, Maggie.
That's still three.
CD Three, but there was another one. Oh, CD Four.
CD Four, so that looks-
Neighborhood Center District. So this really looks like, quote, town center.
Right, downtown.
Yeah.
Yeah, and a nice little description, medium density. Mix of uses and so on.
Is that the electoral? No.
These are general illustrations. The, these are not illustrations of Jericho. These are, just, just as in your illustrations, they're, they're hypothetical illustrations of, of A-Town.
Jericho Center, but I don't know, it's picture.
Yeah. But for some, for, for some, uh, there's, there are photographs.
Yeah, right there is the real-
I think Jericho did, uh, if I remember, like, hired a, maybe that-
Yes.
Consultant that came to speak to us.
To talk to us.
Yeah, Alex said that, I believe.
They hired someone to, um, you know, help them with this.
So, so that's why we, um, that's why we plagiarize, so we don't have to actually pay. And I remember, you know, that guy saying, you really need to pay hundreds of thousands and do this, do this right, and, um, I-
That's not gonna happen.
That's not gonna happen. And, and I, I, I don't either. I, I think that we can, we can pick and choose and come up with a, with a, with a format and some very specific, uh, issues that we wanna cover.
I mean, you, I, you know, I, I think you can see from the questions we're raising here, right, I, I, I'm sure that most of these form-based specs have been written by quote-unquote professionals, and, and they, you know, they, they suffer from definition lack in, in a lot of places where things can go astray. And, you know, I think we're the master of our towns, right? If, if anybody knows what they want, it's us, not a paid consultant. I may have a little bit more trouble putting it into words, but it's doable.
The thing that I think about with Jericho, though, that I think is very different from us, is the fact that we have a, we actually sort of have a downtown, and we're much more commercial.
Right.
So, yes, this is beautiful and wonderful, but it really, we're a little past some of this, because of what we already have.
Well, right, it's why they don't have a Village Center District, right?
Even, e- even the way we've defined Village Northwest and Village Northeast, our, our aim is probably a little different than a Jericho-
Right.
-as well.
It's lovely, but-
We suffer some of the same problems, right? We have a, have a state highway running through us, and it really defines, you know, Jericho Village, but, um-
I mean, I think in some respects works very similar, more so than even Richmond. I've always thought and thought that we were very similar, but when I look at this stuff, I think we're very dissimilar.
But, but look at this, look at this.
Mm-hmm, no, I, that's nice.
The, the clarity of this.
Yes, you're right.
I mean, the, the picture can change, and, and, and this can change, you know, the-
But it's simple.
The setbacks, it, it, it's so, it's so simple.
Yeah.
And, um, it's, it's one page, you know?
Yeah.
Setbacks-
Which people love.
Sideyards, building form-
Yeah.
Lock, occupation, bam, it's right there.
Yeah, no, you're absolutely right about that.
Did you find anything without looking at this in detail, Maggie, like here? You know, where maybe, you know, there's value placed on land, and so when it comes to building something on a piece of land, especially in the sort of more, more, uh, future, at least built-up areas of our communities, was there anything, say, for example, in this that said, hey, you had to, um, build to a certain height? Did you find anything with that, or did anybody else in there?
I don't. I don't. So let me just scoot through and, um-
I mean, it says here, building height, two stories max, but it doesn't say you have to build two stories, say, for example.
No.
Um, and it seems like, you know, there's some parts of any community that you could say, hey, the land is ultimately gonna be valuable enough that, uh, we should prescribe. I mean, especially when you start talking about form-based code, um, it's kind of like, okay, this is where we want the building, and this is roughly the volume of the building that we would like to prescribe, you know?
Right, but again, as, um, you know, I, as has been pointed out, they're, they're more rural, I mean-
Right, exactly.
Yeah, so it's a-
So, right, but I get your point, that this is very concise, practical way to do it.
Right, and there's no, no reason why we couldn't adapt and, and say, in an easier format, say Village Northwest, Village Northeast, you know?
Well, I must say, I mean, in addition to your comments about plagiarizing, you know, John was the one, well, and Joe has too, at times, you know, when we listen to that consultant come, um, there is a side to me that sort of says, we can do this ourselves.
Yeah.
You know, we can figure this out ourselves, both based on, uh, some good examples, um, our own familiarity with our communities, um, our community, our own, you know, the sort of pool of expertise-
Right, right.
-in this group.
That is what the planning commissioner is here to do.
That's exactly what we're here to do.
They never told me that when I was interviewed.
Right. Yeah.
Plus, we, we have plenty of staff in this town, I think.
First thing I did as a planning commissioner is raise my hand, say, yeah, I can, I can write the zoning rules for, for what became NRG. I, I learned that it's tougher than, you know, I originally thought, but it's doable, alright, and this is what the board is meant to do.
Right.
That and, you know, that and the town plan, so.
If I could address your question, well, Rattleboro, it looked like every district was a, a two-story minimum building.
Okay. There's no question that, both with Marie and with Rattleboro, and this one frankly, the illustrations, um, are really useful.
Yes, absolutely.
And I imagine if they're useful for us, they're really useful for applicants, and people who are thinking of doing something.
Right, yeah. Yeah, I learned all I ever wanted to know about lot layers, especially since I hadn't even realized that there was such a thing as a lot layer.
What is it?
Principal frontage, secondary-
Yeah.
First layer, second layer.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But they do go on a bit about lot layers.
Yeah.
And I'm just gonna scoot on by. Uh, let's see.
I noticed they commented on the roof shape, and they did not include a flat roof, like some of the older buildings right here in the village, that have a facade that has a straight line across the top, which is pretty typical, uh, village, uh, form, if you're thinking about historic forms, Bristol for Chans, we've, we've seen that.
So, so I thought this was in, I just, I, you know, and looking at, at language for some things that we've already talked about, um, and I found this, um, snippet on building facades, um, um, for larger, you know, longer building facades. And since permeability is, is definitely part of our, um, part of our conversation and something we're gonna talk about, and it had some illustrations here, um, on yards, requirements there, uh, porches, requirements. And with each illustration, they say which district it's, it's permitted. And especially, you know, if we do decide to, whether we're gonna combine all districts or have, you know, separate commercial, um, uh, Village Northeast, Village Northwest, four courts, let me see.
There's a flat roof, right, John? In the middle? Can you go down?
Is that considered a flat roof, in the middle?
Yeah.
That may not be in. A district that allow, you know, doesn't allow that.
And now that I see that, I see that there are some in Bristol, you're right.
Oh, yeah.
It's fake in the front and then it's flat.
Yeah. Yeah.
What's the significance of the blue, you guys?
Yeah.
That's what they're talking about, like they're really talking about over there on the right.
Shop front.
So here, office front.
Shop front.
You can't read that?
No, not when she was breathing.
I can't, I can't read it from here even with my glasses on.
No, I, I could see the text.
So, so in this one, the frontage and lot lines, they have the characteristics and then, um, but here, talking about building and ceiling height, floor elevations, roof type and pitch, yeah, I wonder how much they paid for this?
Maybe they got a grant, didn't?
Yeah.
Didn't Alex say they got a grant?
Well, it couldn't have been the municipal planning grant, which is only 10,000, this is a heck of a lot more than 10,000.
Yeah, I have no idea.
Yeah, so i- into glazing, uh, street screens, building type standards, um, yeah.
What do those architectural standards say? Like it says right there, thirteen point five.
One more, keep going.
Over on the left, it says, uh, go down a little further.
Oh, okay.
All right, so now here, thirteen, four, nine, ten, architectural standards. Buildings in all character districts shall comply with the architectural standards set forth, I can't read it, in thirteen point five.
Okay, so let's have a look.
So what does thirteen point five say? This is a table.
This is permitted, uh.
That's thirteen point three, so I think you've gotta keep going.
Maybe it's not there, but I'd be interested.
Thirteen point four, gotta keep going, a little further, right? If you want thirteen point five, four.
Yeah, I, um, before we get to thirteen point five, if it is here, I can't remember, um, I love this, I mean, I, I remember the, the conversation we had and having, having, uh, you know, all the sections, instead of just a cross-section, I ju- I just found this very, very helpful. And in fact, I'm gonna keep this to look at variations.
So these are all different streets?
Yeah, so the.
Different setbacks and different characters of streets.
Right, so, so Neighborhood Drive and then, um, Little Busier Neighborhood Street.
Yep.
And I think there's one more, Parks, Park Street.
Well, this one just has development on one side and a park on the other.
Right. Oh, no, they've got a bunch more par- so Park Street Residential.
Yep.
Uh, Park Street Mixed Use. And they even have alley.
That's so nice, cause I've talked about.
Again, each one of these, they've got permitted districts.
Principal buildings and then the secondary.
Yeah.
Alley.
Okay.
And the next section, I, I just think would be, I, just as a, a resource, just definitions of, of these. And, um, again, where they're permitted and the, um, the specs on each, each one, I mean, for my own use, I, I find that incredibly helpful.
A shero, oh boy.
What is that?
That means you get to lick your friend's ice cream.
While you're riding about bicycling in the road.
Yeah.
With a car coming behind you.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Let me see, oh, yeah, here's another section, public plantings. So they don't just describe it.
Things show it.
Yeah, and so, so, um, we don't have, well, actually, I think.
Somewhere in our.
Yeah, we might, we might see it, but, but very, very specific. Instead of just a vague, you know, plant some greenery, um, this is like exactly the kind of greenery you're supposed to, in terms of height and again, which districts.
I have a feeling some of those wouldn't grow in Vermont.
This is Jericho.
Yeah, but that's Vermont.
That's Vermont.
A cucumber magnolia? I don't know, that one.
All right. Tatsuhari.
Is there significance to the, the, the left side column?
Yeah, exactly, so, so, so if in the regs they say, you know, plant a, plant a variety of, um, of tree types or what do they call them, tree shapes?
That's good.
I think it's incredibly helpful.
Maybe get rid of some of those trash trees they keep planting.
Yeah. Same type of thing for, for lighting.
Yeah.
Which I, you know, I think we could, we could adapt this, you know, um, to our own language and what we're, what we're looking for. All right, let me just look through, what else have I got? Okay, so architectural standards and outlines.
There we are.
Yeah.
This section.
So this section, um, composition is one of the big, biggies, and you can see facades and, um.
Got three stories.
Boy, dare you. I mean, very, uh, very specific facades. First floors, principal buildings, residential finished floor level, um, walls. They talk about materials, very specifics in some areas about materials. And.
No visible butt joints?
What was the next section, attachments and, attachments and elements, um.
Balconies and porches shall be made of painted or stained wood? That's pretty specific.
But, but what, what I like is, is, um, separating, separating this section, instead of, you know, Village Northeast, just cramming it all together, instead have all this in a separate section. Even, even down to chimneys, materials, colonnades, rooftop mechanical and telecommunications.
Look, there's a lot of language in there, just, I mean, we're just going by quickly, that really is, uh, sort of generic and actually, some of this stuff is very, uh, Charleston, Savannah.
Right.
A little southern.
Is it?
It looks, on first, uh, superficial glance, I'm just saying.
You think, you think someone did a cut and paste thing here?
This was not written specifically for Jericho, I don't think.
This is, this is, yeah.
I think it's been cribbed from some of it.
Somewhere else, not necessarily.
They, they had this language, the consultant had this language, all of these illustrations, they were pulling that out of work that they had done.
Even gutters down spots.
I mean, talk about plagiarizing, uh, Maggie, this, this is totally that.
So I, I think the, I mean. What I, what I, what I appreciate is, um, is primarily the, the clarity of presentation and the organization in terms of, uh, not, the, the way our regs are, just cramming everything together on, under Village Northeast is, um, is, uh.
And that's sort of what I meant about co-just.
Exactly, exactly, yeah.
You're, yeah.
Yeah.
The presentation and the ease of being able to read it and figure it out. So I think we can all agree that we want that going forward.
Right, right.
Right?
Yeah, and, and obviously, you know, uh, for our own, um, you know, what we choose to, to, to have.
Right.
But, yeah, but in, in terms of, um, let me just go back to.
It's easy to read, for sure.
Yeah, I mean, right here, we could do this right now with a couple of photographs and just lay out the information for, you know, in a, in a table-type, um, format.
Yep.
Yeah.
One thing up there, they said, no aluminum doors or storm windows.
Right.
In Vermont? So you're, you're right, Ross, it's probably, it's a southern thing.
So there you go, that's Jericho.
Very good.
All right.
Seems like something to look at, for real careful.
Yeah, yeah, for sure. Okay, Joe?
Yeah, all right, so, um, I had South Burlington, um, the excerpt was nineteen pages, it is all tables, notes or figures. There is no real paragraph text in there other than short purpose descriptions of what this is. And it, and it breaks down to, to three different kind of zones that they're dealing about, something they call T3 slash, uh, slash T3 plus, where they're emphasizing residential, um, T4, which is kinda higher density mixed-use urban, and T5, which is Market Street, and I didn't go back to the, the full South Burlington document, which is over three hundred pages, but I, I kinda got the impression that, that this was working its way back from Market Street. And so they were defining three distinct areas, working, you know, Market Street and working back from Market Street. And, and I thought that concept in itself was interesting, we've kinda talked about that before, is, is kinda what you want facing a 116 on, on a Village Northeast and Village Northwest, and what you may want one or two blocks back and then back from there and trying to grade it that way, so that was an interesting concept to me. I boiled it down to like two pages of likes and dislikes for, for each of the, the zones, so T3 and T3 plus is basically neighborhood, um, things I liked. And, and they were different conceptually than a lot of things that we talked about here. One is, they spec a minimum lot width, but not a minimum lot size, they only, they only care about basically frontage. They talk about off-street parking away from the, the primary street, I think we've talked about that one before, I liked that. They spec minimum units per acre instead of maximum, all right? All right, and I could not find maximum in there, so, so that is saying, you know, we want a built-out area. And they, they, right, they do specify in this zone, they, they specify a, a, a maximum, you know, footprint as a percentage of, of the lot, but otherwise, right, nothing. They spec a minimum height, it's one and a half stories in this particular area. They also spec a max height, it's like two and a half to three and, three and a half, depending on whether it's a T3 or a T3 plus. I thought that was a little low, that was a negative, um, in my mind. They specify build two lines instead of setbacks, and the build two lines are not real generous, they're like twenty feet max for a lot of primary structures, a little bit more for secondary structures, so fairly close to the street. They mandate primary facades must face the street, so it's something we talked about before, and they say it should be the narrow dimension, right? So they really wanna encourage depth into a lot versus width across a lot. They spec a single span for a single facade at like twenty-four feet, so, I mean, you gotta break, you know, you gotta break things up, either in den, out den, or, or whatever, um, that was something we saw in Regens. They talk about blocks and they define what the perimeter dimensions are of a block and what any single dimension can be, so it's kinda forcing this rectilinear kind of definition of neighborhoods, does it in a really interesting way, but, okay. They define street types like a lot of other ones here, only there's like probably a dozen of them, and, and I didn't go back and, and find all the different definitions, but there's, there's alleys and drives and, you know, everything, everything there, and, and different, you know, different types of uses are, you know, defined for different types. An interesting concept to me here, they have a statement that says, parking spaces may be leased from the city or another owner, which kinda sounds like consolidated parking, they're, they're, they're trying to encourage consolidated parking and say, everybody doesn't have to have their own parking.
Could you lease one parking space? You had two on your lot and the guy next door had none, could you lease him that space?
In the table, it's, it's not, not that specific. They talk about side rear underground parking being encouraged, uh, for residential and on-site or rear parking required for non-residential. They talk about types of front scape, um, they want, they want flowers or bushes, right? So, you know, mindfully absent there was grass and things like that, they kinda want, you know, inviting front scapes. Bike racks are mandated, but they're mandated like every three hundred feet, so even, so in South Burlington, they're stretched further apart. Interestingly, um, enough, well, I'll, I'll talk about that and dislikes, but, um, upper floor glazing must also meet the thirty percent minimum, so they're, they're trying to match things, not have blank walls, that was some of the criticism I had of, of Williston, is you look at some of the second stories above some of what they built, and there's only one or two small windows up there, and it's kinda, kinda looks odd. And then they said second-story units must have six-foot balcony if street-facing along the entire facade, so step back. Dislike, the max height seemed low, um, they allowed detached mixed-use storefronts, but not attached mixed-use storefronts, so you couldn't have the combination, and that seemed a little odd to me. Stoops weren't required, uh, variation in building facade is only encouraged, not required, and then they have, then they have a statement that says, blank facade strongly discouraged. Huh? That was a miss. Not enough street trees, they specify, I, I mean, they, they require a, 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 a average spacing of like fifty feet, it seems like way too far.
That's not much.
Yeah, so that's, that's a miss. Benches are only permitted as, you know, at, at kinda the oversight of the Department of Public Works, so you'd think if, if you're gonna have bike racks, right? Right, every so often, you, you kinda wanna encourage, you know, benches and things like that, but apparently you gotta go through a different process for that. No third floor, only residential. Cottage court concept, kinda where the parking's inside and, you know, you got buildings all around it, I didn't like the pictures.
Where are some pictures?
There, oh, there, there's, there's lots, you know, it's, it's probably free section, there's a third. Now, the thing with the pictures, my complaint here is, it's like a technical spec. The one picture I want to explain something they're talking about is the one that is not there, so, um, you, you know, note to self, we, we need to be careful about our, our pictures, um, and I think down, down through the South Burlington one, you can find something called a cottage court, which really didn't turn me on. I thought they needed more stipulation on what happened in front of the buildings. All right, then there's urban multi-use density, so likes, shorter list here, I'm kinda speeding things up as I went along. So no lot size again, number of stories is two to four, except for accessory buildings, which can be one. To build a zone, um, reduced to twelve feet, so things in close to the road. There must be three building breaks every eighty feet, I think it's eighty, and facade max run is forty-eight, so step back, step forward, sort of thing. Yeah, there's the cottage court.
What do you feel about that?
Well.
You don't like it or?
I really don't, I really don't like it, one, one parking is, parking is right out there at the lot line.
Okay.
You know, um, I don't know, cottage courtyard to me, you know, looking at that central space, is that really gonna get used? Is it, is it big enough to really?
The middle, where it says courtyard?
The middle side.
They gave in, no dimensions on any of these things like that courtyard, how big is that?
They probably did, I mean, there are lots of tables.
Okay.
Trying to, trying to hit the general points here that we can learn from.
The parking looks like it's outside of the lot line.
Well, it's, it's, it's right, it's right out there, and I didn't, I didn't really like that.
So.
No, the lot line's the furthest line out.
But, see, John, in the, oh, so they mean the lot line in the front is where I'm looking at, which is lot line, but then the, the other line is here, must be. Okay, sorry. I kinda like the way the parking's back there, actually, but I guess if it was, it would need to be shaded, um.
But, but think of living there in the winter and I live in.
Yeah.
The front house.
It's a long ways.
On the primary, I mean, how, how do I live there comfortably?
And the other thing is, there's two curb cuts here for this particular.
Right, for that.
But it is six unit, one, two, three, five units. It's different, we can say that, I think it's a little different.
Alright, so I talked, okay, so I talked about street definitions. They, so T4, they mandate a minimum distance between curb cuts, which is really large. It's four hundred feet for Market Street and a hundred feet for anything else. So it's increased density, the facade requirements kind of break that up. So same parking concentration lease clauses, you know, municipal or somebody else, again, group parking. There was an interesting item there that said, if you want to build a new one-story, it must be, and I didn't write down the figure, it must be a minimum distance from an existing one-story. So you can't have clustered one-story buildings. You must have differentiation in height regarding that.
I haven't saw the old people though, that don't want to go upstairs. Which is a lot of people.
More or so.
Right. Or can't.
So, there's density, same parking. There's a spec on max separation of different types of entrances. So, you know, where entrances were along a facade, how far apart. Kind of get the look, if, you know, you think back to Regent's and what was interesting about some of the market block, you know, how the entrance went in. And there was a spec on max continuity of upper windows. So, and there, as well as some base rules on aspect ratios and inset for those windows. So they're trying to do look and feel. So dislikes, no percentage coverage spec for lots. You want to build a hundred percent? You can do that here. So that, I think is something we're not interested in. Any type of building is permitted, so it kind of, you know, mixing. So glazing requirements, only forty percent of the width, but the windows were high. So I didn't, you know, for buildings that are multi-use and maybe have commercial or, you know, retail on the first floor, I thought that was low. And within that, they spec the percentage that had to be transparent. So you could have some of those windows, twenty-five percent in this case, that was opaque. Really defeating the purpose of permeability. No requirement to parking me back. Probably has to be from the build-to-line, but... No requirement for parking requirements for first-floor usage under thirty-five hundred square feet. Mandate for upper-floor setbacks in the rear of the building, but not the front. And I didn't get that. On the rear of the building, they're mandating setbacks as you go higher on the building, in the back, but not the front. So I don't, I didn't get that. They did spec the number of stories. It's two to four, as I said, except for accessory. But then they start talking about rules for, you know, one-story buildings as principal uses with min sizes.
I thought they didn't want any of them.
I thought they didn't want them either. And this kind of looks like a big box allowance. And the only thing they really say is they're, you know, these buildings must be at least twenty-four feet high and look like two-story. So fake. So this section was really confusing to me. They reduced their glazing requirements to thirty percent on upper stories, which I thought would imbalance things. And there's no regulation on what happens in front, other than the build-to-line, what it looks like. Alright, T5, which is kind of least applicable here, it's Market Street. I like the minimum building stories of two, the max of six is too big for us. Again, there's no lot size, frequency of public entrances, they put down. Window glazing, they list. Block and street dimensions again. No lot coverage max, that's a negative. They have a concept of a primary and secondary build-to-zone, which I don't get.
What's the build-to-zone?
Yeah, so I think, kind of from what I got is, you need to put part of your building in the, you know, to the primary build-to, and then you can set some more back. But you don't have to set it back, but you can set up to like twenty-five percent back, a little bit.
So that building on the left would be what you're talking about?
And the build-to, the build-to is zero. It doesn't allow any clauses or anything for kind of à la Regent's, kind of, you know, patio or kind of entrance area, you know, open entrance area prior. And I thought that would be really nice, especially if you want to encourage some, you know, on-street, you know, outside-of-building usage, cafe, whatever. Facade horizontal breaks are only recommended. I thought that was something we learned in Regent's, how important that was. And upper-story glazing, it's a minimum of thirty percent, so it's really very different than first floor. And again, worried about balance. Those were the major things that I learned. But, you know, I think the biggest thing, I like the reinforcement of kind of stepping back from Market Street and differentiating different areas and having them look a little different and kind of transition, you know, what is the major focus of use?
Is Market Street the one that they're working on now?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, charts and pictures. What an interesting going through that. I mean, that's, it's like there's no, unless Alex didn't copy it, there's no narration really.
Yeah, there's no, like the Jericho spec has pictures, and it has, you know, small paragraphs about different things. This is much more specification-oriented. You won't find anything in here that, you know, that says, I want it to look like, you know, a hundred years ago in New England. It's just numbers.
Do you think it's because it's a much larger community?
I think it is. You know, I think that they're going for, you know, in this one area, they're going for a highly urban, dense, modern landscape.
You can also, I mean, just generally, for most, well, not all these towns, but for most of them, you can see the burden on the planning and regulatory staff. I mean, to sort of first come to understand this and then understand it so that you can actually rule on it.
And explain it to developers.
And inform, you know, the simpler, the diagrams and information is for comprehension on the part of a person who wants to make a building or develop a building.
I mean, the learning process, there's a lot of information here to kind of memorize and know where it is and steer people, certainly there. But, I mean, it is, you know, for what it wants to do, just numbers, it is highly specific. There is not a lot of interpretation that I think would probably go on here, either by the municipality or by the developer.
Put a lot of attention to detailing of it. I mean, the staff and the developer has to look at every one of these standards that can get pretty detailed to confirm, are we doing this according to the regulations?
Right. I mean, in some way, you're absolutely correct. And in other ways, you know, what the total look and feel is, this doesn't do that.
And I keep thinking, how do these rules that we're looking at, how do they in fact play out? What gets created based on these rules? And maybe that's not always available because they haven't been applied yet or no development has happened yet.
I mean, what's interesting about South Burlington is, you know, to the extent you can get onto Market Street, it's, the road's closed, but, you know, you can see this in action.
Yes.
They are building this out right now.
Right. It's worth saying too, I mean, it doesn't certainly guarantee that you're gonna get something good by any means. I don't mean to claim that. But the buildings that are being discussed here and described in general have a public quality to them. And so by law in this state, there has to be an architect designing these buildings. So in terms of presumably, if you're a professional in that arena, you're gonna understand these rules a little bit better. And you might not need all this prescriptive, you know, in terms of glazing percentages. A lot of these things might, hopefully, not always, come somewhat naturally or by virtue of your training, so that you might be able to do these things perhaps a little bit better than in some rural community where, you know, it's more half-half. If that makes any sense to anybody. You're assuming that those architects that went through school and graduated ended up with the sensitivity to good design elements. I claim no, you know, like any line of work, you've got people who do really well and people who don't do so well.
Right.
Well, we're at twenty-three, almost eight twenty-five. Two more to go, John and Ralph. And if we keep to fifteen minutes each, then we've got five minutes for other stuff. So, John, you're up.
Okay, so I have South Hero.
There are pictures.
There are some pictures, there are some drawings, little sketches. The whole section on form design is three pages, four pages, let's say, stretching it, four total pages. And they identify the purpose and applicability of this. This is Village District Form and Design Standards, is how they name this section. So they define the purpose and the applicability, the entrance orientation, the scale, the architectural details, and the arrangement of windows. Those are the main categories that they talk about. Under purpose and applicability, they say these, this section applies to principal structures subject to conditional use and/or site plan review located in the village districts. There's two of them, South Hero Village District and Keeler Bay Village District. And only those two districts. Entrance orientations, the entrances, there'll be at least one public entrance that is prominent and oriented to the public right-of-way. And then they get more specific in defining what what the entrance with architectural detailing should include. That defines the entrance.
But I noticed they don't say, you know, how wide, how deep the porch should be.
No, they don't talk about lot coverage, setbacks. It's all, to my way of reading it, it's all very much oriented to how do you deal with this object, this building? And the entrance is important, and they talk about that. And they talk about what defining the entrance means. It can include landscape features, walkways, planters, planting trees, hedges. They don't say any more than that. They don't say these should be columier trees, they should be round trees, they should be so far apart or so close. They just say there should be landscape features. And they have a little sketch, the one that's above where you've got it, that shows that one right there. Canopy, porch, transom, that's defining a major entrance. The scale, which is illustrated by the next building, they talk about modulation. It's the same old, how long a facade you can have without making a change. Setting it back, identifying it by a different roof structure, or changes in material or texture. And the architectural details are likely not specifically defined, but they have a sketch that goes with that, those two sketches right there. Windows, porch, patio, deck, covered entry, balcony, bay windows, changes in roof line, changes in building material. Those are all the things that you can use to articulate the planes. And they don't want any non or unmodulated segment of the roof to exceed thirty feet. So there was a drawing, if you back up one, there was a drawing right there that shows these intervals. And those intervals are limited, thirty feet. You can see right below the D of draft, they call that out. The arrangement of the windows really is talking about how much of the facade needs to be windows. And they define what is facade. It includes the roof area that is sloped, like in that upper building, is sloped toward the primary facade. And skylights that are built into that roof area, not dormers, but, which seemed odd, because dormers seem more obviously part of the window facade. But skylights get counted as part of the amount of windows. And they do define what the window is in terms of its area. It includes the trim around the window. It's not just the operable part, it's not just the glass part. It's everything that defines the windows. They don't do things like saying the shutters should be of a dimension that they, in fact, if we're closed, would cover the window. I've seen so many buildings where the window is, you know, ten feet wide, it may be subdivided, and then there are these little narrow shutters on either end of it. It's like, what is that for? It's totally decorative. So the arrangement of the windows category is really just talking about what percentage of the window. And they do say that these percentages apply to different faces. Facades or facades facing and oriented to the public right-of-way have to be at least fifteen percent. Side facades visible from the public right-of-way, ten percent. Rear facades and those not visible from the public right-of-way, no minimum standard. So very much oriented toward the public side of the building. And again, it's a series of rules that apply to freestanding buildings. And it doesn't distinguish whether they're residential, commercial. Residential on the upper floors, commercial on the lower floors, none of that is commented on. They do make some general recommendations about the character intent is defined by a section that did not get copied in what Alex gave us. But it's basically, you can see by the drawings, they use, they're suggesting very much New England kind of appearances. So you don't see any guidance for a more contemporary design, something like NRG's building, for example. Doesn't, they don't sketch out rules that can help you plan that kind of an approach. They don't want that. They want something very much historic to New England. And again, it only applies to these two village districts. And the thing that impressed me, and by the way, Jean went along with me, and we used it as a nice little drive, because it's beautiful, beautiful weather the day we went. And we went on to North Hero, which, to our, both of us said it, and Jean said it before I did. She said, "North Hero has a sense of a village center, and it's right on the water." South Hero, these districts are along Route Two. South Hero, these districts are along Route 2. And in fact, the major district, the town center, is like a strip highway. And sometimes the paving goes into the parking lot, right in front of the building, and the building is set back from that. So we were having a hard time actually saying, "This is the village center." It doesn't have that characteristic, you don't read it that way. Whereas in North Hero, there's a big, beautiful inn right across the road from that, and it's looking into the bay. Right across from that is a restaurant, they have an outdoor eating area that you can actually see from the road. And you have to, you know, go behind the building, but then you're right on the lakeside. There's a deli, gas station right in that area, there's a courthouse for that county is there.
Maybe we should have looked at regs for North Hero.
I don't know whether they have any form-based code in North Hero. It wasn't something that Alex gave us, so I don't think they do.
As he explained, he just looked for...
He picked the ones that had form-based codes. And as you see right across the front, draft, this is not something that's in their code yet, so you don't see what's happening based on this code. There was one new building being built right on the road that runs through the village, facing the lake. I'm pretty sure it's going to be a residence. Big windows, you can see into the building, big porch, relatively close to the road, but not being done by any of these rules, simply being done by the people who are developing it. And it's a single building. This is a very different place than Heinsberg, and in the opposite way that Brattleboro is very different than Heinsberg. The population is low. I tried to go to the office, the town municipal office, well, they close at noon. You know, I mean, it just, it's a different scale of place. And the other thing about it is, it is absolutely gorgeous. I mean, if you can imagine someone coming from the Midwest or from California, had never been to that area, they would love it. You can drive in some places where you're seeing the lake on both sides, and it's just such a unique place that I think Heinsberg could keep that in mind in terms of how can we create a unique space here, a special town, a special village. They, by location only, they get that quality.
Well, that's it.
They didn't have to do anything about that.
And every village has its own, you know, every town has its own, something that makes it special.
That can make it, and I think we can expand on that. So, you know, they don't address things like how much parking or where the parking is. They don't talk about what happens on a corner lot, which is the principal facade and so forth. So it's, as Alex comments was, it's pretty light, but some of the things they deal with are, I think, things that are useful for us here in Heinsberg.
Thank you. All right. Ralph, Westford.
Okay, Westford. I apologize, I really haven't had enough time to really get as specific as some of you have.
That's okay, we just want to look at the pictures anyway.
And I'd say in general, just looking at Jericho, Westford is like Jericho, light, light, you know? Which seems appropriate, I think, given its physical location and where it is. There were some things that were, like, some of you've probably noticed, in South Burlington it was the case, and I think in Jericho, there's a lot of this, this use of the letter T, which is really sort of urban planning speak in this country now for the transect, which is a kind of measure of just the intensity of prescribed development sort of within certain zoning districts, I guess you could say.
Well, from the center, dense area, out.
Yeah, and sort of different circumstances or different regulations applied to those different transects, with the higher number like T5 being the most densely configured. So this is a good illustration of this. Westford has like five different zoning districts. And two of them are more urban and comprise this area, which is a transect diagram, and encompasses the common and the village, as they say. And then they have three rural zoning districts. I think it's R3, R5, and R10. And as you can imagine, each one of those rural districts have different prescriptions for lot coverage, setbacks, density, required frontage, things like that. Whereas what they've done is the transect district, which has five different character traits across it, are those that are found in the common and the village district. And those transect areas are, again, much like I just described with the rural zoning districts, each one of them has a prescribed set of standards that comply. The green is the common here, the yellow is the village district. And if you scroll on a little bit, there's a nice statement of purpose I found, and this now...
Was that the first page?
It's chapter 26. I don't see it here, it says "purpose." This form-based code overlay district.
Yeah, I hear it says there.
Okay. "Is intended to guide the physical form of the built environment in order to foster the revitalization of Westford's historic town center area and promote quality," you can all read, "compact and pedestrian-friendly mixed-use development that replicates and extends traditional development patterns." You know, as a statement of purpose, I thought that was pretty good.
Again, referring to historic aspects.
There's a lot of that. That can stunt your growth, you know, if you look back rather than forward.
Well, we do live in New England, right?
But then the planning and design standards, they really, this is quite specific, actually, within the T5 district, you know, this is kind of like a sidewalk relationship in what you can do with an awning, and what you can do with a porch, and what you can do with, you know, a building overhang, say for example, on the extreme right. So within that, those five transect districts, there were, it wasn't as heavily laden with illustrations like Jericho, say for example. I think they just, you know, it's hard to afford. You might go to the next, a little further. That was quite specific, that particular. So basically, within the T5, T4, T3, T2, and T1, frontage, height, roof forms, like say for example, a flat roof form was only allowed in the first two T districts, you know, analogous perhaps to like an Italian eight structure, like we have in our town. Prescribed density to a large degree, parking requirements, and how they worked. Definitely sort of worth looking at, as much because it seemed, you can tell the illustrations are a little less friendly, but worth looking at, I guess.
In South Hero, I kept feeling I was basically looking at, except for this highway development pattern that runs along Route 2, I was looking at one of the, if it were a transect, part of a transect analysis, it would be one of the ones at the outer edge of the built environment. It's not really creating a dense center, a sense of a dense center at all. But it has useful things to say about individual buildings as they might be arrayed in areas beyond, outside of that central village.
Yeah, there was an interesting table in the Westford that showed sort of photographs that were somewhat character-laden. Are there many more pages in this, Maggie?
One more.
Windows, you get your porch and radio.
And then it culminates in sort of a chart.
Ah.
Yeah, there was this...
Okay, everybody turn your heads.
This was interesting, but go on even further if you can, there were still, there's a kind of form-based code zoning chart, I guess you might call it, or it was called a transect zone summary table. That's it, right here. So this, say for example, you've got your most concentrated and dense on the left in the T5, and you can see the lot areas go from a quarter acre, a third acre, to a half in the other districts. Lot widths diminish towards the T5, lot coverage increases towards the T5. How much density you can have, heights, footprint, area, footprint, you know, so this was, I thought this was actually fairly useful. If you could actually condense information and order it in this clearer fashion, you could go to this chart, and you could see the whole shoot and match, at least as far as the downtown, such as it exists, area of Westford. So I thought this table was, you know, if you're looking for easy shopping, so to speak, it didn't tell you everything, but it certainly gave you the basics in a kind of concentrated and fairly clear form. And I like the categories as well, you know, lots and density, building size and massing, building location, you know, frontage.
That's a little like Jericho's, a little bit.
Yeah, it'd be interesting to compare them.
Just a little easier to take in, I guess.
And I think it depends how, you know, how, what we want, you know, how many sub-districts, I guess, we're going to have. But yeah, absolutely, it's all right here, and I think that's really valuable.
No yard?
You scroll down.
Yeah.
Too small.
Yard not permitted.
No.
In the front, in the front, in the front, I guess.
Frontage type, right.
Fence not permitted.
For me, this, what seems to be really a well-done but elaborate set of rules for my image of what Westford is right now.
Yeah.
There's not much going on there, and yet, wow, there's lots of direction given in their code.
Expectation.
Yeah. I like the fact that, and I'm sure some of the others do this too, I wasn't always paying attention maybe, but like, I love this category, frontage build-out, like in the T5 district, the most dense. The front of your building had to occupy 60 percent or more of the lot frontage. So, you know, the gap, or the size of the gap, the minimum size of the gap was prescribed in this way.
Lot width also comes...
But it also prescribed, I thought it did that, further up, minimum lot width or maximum lot width, lot area, lot width, 50 foot minimum, 100 foot maximum. So, you know, if you took the 60 percent, presumably you'd come to a number. And then it would triangulate back, you know?
Yeah.
So anyway, I thought this chart was pretty good.
Yeah.
As a...
We need something like that, honestly.
Yeah, for sure.
Well, I think that's a lot of it. You try to build a project in the city of Burlington, and there are so many overlapping regulatory bodies, mostly on the part of the city, that you're always missing something, you know? And it's incredibly confusing and embarrassing, even, you know, when you've been hired as a professional and you miss a bunch of these things, which is very, very simple to do, let alone if you're a layperson who happens to not like all that stuff in the first place, you feel like a total fool, you know, half the time, which seems to be the intent, make you feel like a fool so that you subjugate yourself before the authorities.
That's awful. That's awful.
And that's an unfriendly atmosphere.
Very, yeah.
You hear people complain about development in Burlington, and a lot of it has to do with just how the regulatory officials treat the people doing the applying.
Being intimidated by...
Yeah.
Well, you know, I think our regs are unfriendly.
They are.
I think...
I've heard many people complaining.
If somebody just wanted to figure out, can I put a potting shed in my backyard? Or what, you know, whatever, it should be easier to figure out for normal people.
Yeah.
And I include me in that because I, you know, I don't like zoning speak, and I don't think we should be writing that. I know that we need to legally have some of that, but then again, I've seen examples where it's really pictures and charts, and I think, yeah, I think that works better. Thank you, Ralph.
That's interesting.
Yeah, it was really interesting. I'm going to quickly sneak back here to the very last page because I'd forgotten. I just wanted to look at this part. Buildings that are stylized in an attempt to use the building itself as advertising shall be prohibited, particularly where the proposed architecture is the result of corporate or franchise architecture.
Golden arches.
Yeah.
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 What is this about? Dog houses and run tubs.
Yeah, right.
Exterior fluorescent lights.
Yeah, yeah.
What about bug lights?
Bug lights.
Birdhouses, anything?
All right, people, we're done.
Well, they brought it up, I mean, they're in their regulations.
All right. Okay, thank you, I thought that was very helpful, very useful.
That's good information.
Let's move on to minutes of the July 4th meeting, July 24th. I was close. You weren't here for the 4th, it was a great meeting.
It's a lot of fun seeing, you know, peers of your kids.
That was cool.
Or your own kids.
That was cool.
Sort of show up at an event, and now they've suddenly and magically become a mature adult, articulate, and devoted to a purpose, and that was a lot of fun.
Does anyone have any changes, additions to the minutes for July 24th? Motion?
Motion approved.
Second.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Stand.
All right. Okay, and other business, Town of Williston will have a revision hearing, regulation revision hearing on August 20th, and I'm sure you've all memorized the details that were in Dropbox. So, there you go. Does anyone have anything else?
Were you happy with the pop-up part?
It was incredibly successful.
It was awesome, Maggie.
It was awesome. So, yeah, I mean, we were thinking, well, maybe there are, you know, about 200, but I got feedback from the community feedback people, from 168 people. So I knew that there... So I knew that there, I had a bunch of friends who came from Burlington, South Burlington, so I know that there were more than, way more than 200.
Those aren't considered ringers, are they? Bringing them in from outside of town? I think we would like to...
I was only, I think, Heinsburg residents vote, so, anyway, yeah, a lot of people showed, so.
How did it go with the space? Because I wasn't able to go. We were out of town.
You know, it's really interesting because it's a big space. When you go out there, it's a big space. And we had a lot going on, but Andrea, the night before and early that morning, she borrowed a bunch of shrubs and potted trees and stuff, was setting up seating, you know, areas, and she said, "Crowd the space. Don't put things way out. Crowd things." And I was schlepping benches back and forth, and I got there at one point and it just seemed really crowded to me. But it ended up being a great idea because everyone was together, it was, yeah. And Marie Ambos came, and she does triage, and that was fantastic. And actually, the conference I went to, put on by the Vermont Council for Rural Development, Allison Cleary talked about, she gave a talk on building a narrative, telling your town's story, and she used that tree as an example. So anyway, it was fantastic. And we'll see where it goes from here, so, yeah. All right.
So, you guys, at some point, I've been sort of fussing around with a little part of the village, and I showed some of that to Maggie and Alex and...
Next meeting, I hope.
I, that's what I was trying to get a read on. I mean, I can do it anytime you want, and it sort of speaks to this conversation tonight, like, okay...
It does, it does absolutely, because it's showing, this is something that we could have. Rolf reimagined the section of 116 between Commerce Street and...
Patrick Road and the Mechanicsville Road.
Yeah. And so it's an illustration of something that we could have that I find incredibly attractive and intriguing. And it's like, we could talk about that, and how do we get that? How do we write regulations to get something like that? If as a group, we decide we want it?
That's kind of what I was trying to do. It's not so much that what I would show you is like necessarily what ought to be done. It might be sort of a case study, I guess. And there are probably parts of it where people might say, "Okay, yeah, that's worth trying to achieve," or at least parts of it are. How do you write stuff to at least make it possible for that to happen? That's kind of the quandary that I find myself in frequently.
So our next, Alex and I'll talk next week, at the end of next week, about the agenda for the following week.
Okay.
So...
Anytime.
Yeah, I think that would be a good segue into our discussion, a very good one. And so you'll be here?
Yeah, I'm away next week, but I'm back then.
Beautiful.
I'd just like that. I guess ask Rolf if you included implications for Commerce Street itself, because to me, that section that you looked at on 116 needs to be considered with Commerce Street as a major part of it. And the second question I had is, as a result of, in the past, we have talked about some things and we've ended up putting them in our regulations without really talking with the landowners about, "We're talking about this. We're considering some rules for this area." So I'm thinking of the Jerrus because of how much of that they own.
Yeah. I'll answer both those questions. The first one, let's say that I steered away from perhaps the most controversial part of Commerce Street.
Yeah.
The Hanaford or Lot 15 or whatever the number is. But I do turn the corner and start down the street a little bit, at least on one side of it. So, you know, I kind of go from the Mechanicsville Road really to Commerce Street and turn the corner a little bit, and stay on that side of the street. I didn't really come over to this side of the street for some of the same reasons. There's an awfully fine metal shop there, and I'd hate to suggest that.
No.
I'd hate to suggest that.
Well, I...
And the second question is, yes, there has been some conversations with the people who own the land over there. It's pretty much just one landowner.
Yes.
And hard to read. I just said, "Hey, you know, it's a bit of a case study. It's not any mandates or anything. We're just sort of looking at that as an example of how we might approach growth in the larger, more densely configured part of our town, you know?"
Yeah.
I think that the shop... The core of Jerrus' work is an amazing place, a unique place. It needs to be, we need to find a way to accommodate it well in our town, from my point of view.
Well, we can talk, I mean, we're not talking about any specific...
We're not talking about it now.
This is just a...
But I just wanted to put out my feeling about that facility and that activity and what it represents for the whole town.
So we'll look at that in a couple weeks. I look forward to that.
Do you want to postpone it or do it another time because we're full up? Just say so.
Yeah, unless something else comes up.
Okay.
We'll see. All right. Well, if there's nothing else, thank you, everybody, and that's it. Meeting's done.